Present, all members present, here from the public. And no words, huh?
Oh, just stay safe in this nice cold weather.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of things to worry about right now, right?
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Let me just do this briefing, general briefing. We've been working on the budget. The, um, I will say that the system that we're working with is new to everybody. And the reports are kind of cruddy looking that come out of it. And we're working with that. Hopefully over time, we can get these refined. So that's one of the things going on. Another thing is that Christine and I have been pursuing, I should say, Talend has, and we have had a conversation about conceivably merging animal control across the three towns of Ashford, Wellington, and Talend. And we'll have more to come on that later. We need to make sure we got all the parties working together on that. So that's that. Bear with me a second because I'm looking at lots of pieces of budget. The, Chris, can you think of anything else that's been key at this point? We have.
Not really, we've been working on the capital improvement.
Yeah. So I would like to mention something about that. I don't know if, Bill, I don't know if you recall, but apparently a couple of years ago, the OPM put in, there's a language regarding a two and a half percent cap on fiscal budgets. Do you recall that, Bill?
Are we talking about the two and a half percent cap on what, increases?
Overall, overall increase.
I remember vaguely something about some, but I don't remember the particulars of it, I can certainly look into it.
Actually, the way it works, if I understand correctly, and this is in layman's terms, and I've just became aware of it myself, is that if you go over two and a half percent from your previous budget, that you will be, could be penalized in your, the grants that you receive, fifty cents on every dollar that you went over. So you know how we talked in the Capital Improvement Committee meeting about some of these capital improvements are, you know, they're not huge, but there are, there are smaller ones. For example, uh, let's see, the $20,000 Town Office Business HVAC System Upgrade. Typically, when you're just replacing the software, you would consider that to be a kind of a maintenance thing. And we were, we were talking about that and talking about how C N R, we need to make sure that we don't deplete C N R to the point where we can't function.
I had the impression that we had consensus on thought. I think we also use as an example, the Historical Commission's $10,000 request that conceptually, when we did the, the C N R, we were looking at big projects.
Right, and then, and Ashford Historical doesn't have a $10,000 request, and they don't have anything this year.
Okay.
Okay, the, um, but I'll give you an example, let's see here, what do we have?
I think I'm a list.
We had, for example, the $15,000 tennis court resurfacing, Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Remember, we were talking about, okay, maybe some of these are ones that can go into the budget for that department instead of in capital improvements. And again, the concern was capital improvements are pretty huge, and we don't have a lot of C N R available. And that perhaps they could be absorbed, some of these pieces could be absorbed into the department budgets. Well, then you hit that two and a half percent cap. So I don't think we understood that at the time. We were talking about potentially moving some of these capital improvement items over into the department budgets. So that's the only point I want to make, is that we have to think this thing through.
Yeah, I think we both probably need to research that a little further.
Yeah, that one, I, that one I do understand. It was kind of, we have something where we had $7,500 that we went over in, I forget what it was, that took us up, I don't know, two and a half percent in some way. And I have to fill out a form for OPM on that. So anyway, I was thinking that when we have our working session for this budget, I'd really like to go through that with, with the two of you.
Yep.
You know, and look at it from that perspective. It's a little bit between a rock and a hard place, so.
I agree.
And there are some of these capital improvements that absolutely have to happen. And got to figure out a way to do it. So what you'll find.
Did we identify specifically those that gotta happen versus?
We're still going, we'll still go, we're still going through that. Certainly, we took a first stab, we moved over, like the tennis court resurfacing, it really needs to be done within about two years. So we moved that one over. If we don't do it, there's a life, end of life on a tennis court, and we're at that point. And if we don't do the resurfacing within a certain period of time, then it's going to cost us about $60,000 to tear the thing up and build it anew.
Yeah.
Okay, and we did get three estimates on that, they all came in around 15,000. But we think we can put that one off a year. Let's see. We also, in the meeting and afterwards, heard from the, bear with me, School Building Committee, that they want, they have $120,000 that they'd like to apply towards the,
Design.
Engineering study.
Engineering study for, for the school, because you've got to have that, and then the architectural design and everything, before you can go on to actually building, so to speak. So they, you want to get started with that, and so that's 120,000. Anyway, we can review these in detail in our other meeting, but certainly we're having another Capital Improvement Meeting on Thursday. So.
Roger, one of the things that I always perceive in our initial meetings with the capital expenditures, we looked at everybody, put in sort of a wish list. And, and, and then we, you know, and it's a very good working group generally, that we kind of lay that down of what makes sense and compare that to what our pocketbooks can afford, what's, you know, absolutely necessary for the look, look at in the short term or long term. So I, I see these first initial couple of meetings as trying to do that, windle it down. I think we got to start on that the other night.
Yes, we did. So our next meeting is on this Thursday, and we'll do some more whittling. I think that we'll hear some more from the school, because really, they didn't put anything in. I'm still waiting to hear about the van replacement, unless, Chris, did we hear that they needed a van?
I haven't heard back from Joan, I'll give her a call tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, but we have some things that we, we can't, we cannot not do. We have a fire truck lease that we already started, those kinds of things. All right, so that's capital improvements, I'm just going to leave that for now. And then moving on in our agenda, hear from Boards, Commissions, Committees.
I figured that Roger was going to be here to talk about the, not Roger, sorry Roger, Jim Roper.
No.
About the roof lease that the school was proposing for.
Oh, no, well, we do have that. And that's, that's going to be under new business, item B.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
So if we can, let's move on to acceptance of minutes of the regular meeting of the 19th of January.
Move we accept.
Second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion accepted or passed, thank you. Okay. And then we have new business, I'm sorry, old business is the 2022, 2122 budget. So what you'll find under meeting materials are, I'm going to say pieces of the budget. You will have the budget package, the printed package on Wednesday. We're pulling, we pulled the information out of the system as best we can. And so you should have that to be able to review prior to our meeting on Saturday. Okay. I don't recall if we have a number for Ash, for E O Smith at this point, a rough number.
I don't think so.
No. And I don't think we have one for Ashford School either, rough cut.
Nope.
So let me just see here. In general, I would say that what we're trying to work with is that general assumption that by the time we get to July, we'll be in a better position for opening some things, maybe doing some other, you know, some, some more of the Park and Rec activities, those kinds of things. I know that Sherry is working on some alternatives for that, for some of the activities, just in case. But in a general sense, we looked at this as being, by the time we get to July, we should be in a more normal state, not completely normal. What's your thinking on that, gentlemen? Because that was a premise that we went with, because you really couldn't go with anything else.
Yeah, I, you know, we've, we've kind of been touching on this every week and, and, obviously, I think we all hopefully have to have a goal to get things open and back to normal as much as we can. But I think, if I read everybody and what we've been saying for quite a while now, excuse me, I don't think, is that particularly with the surge that we're experiencing right now, just made no sense to start nailing down dates, because I think there's just too many unknowns. Lines, though, I have got, for some reason this week, several calls about people being upset with our sheds being closed.
We can't monitor people, we can't.
What I'm, let me just finish, Catherine.
Okay.
What, what, what I'm wondering is, and, and is, what if we put signage up that due to social distancing, only one person at a time can be in either one of those sheds? I know when we first closed it down, there was all sorts of concerns as we were all washing grocery bags and groceries coming in, the transmission on, on surfaces and everything. I, I think that's kind of waned. But I'm just, and I'm not looking for action tonight, although the people that called me are. I, I'd like you guys to give that some thought and see if we can come up with something on it. Doesn't seem like a, a terrible request. And I know one of the people that have been harping on this for quite a while lives under my roof. And that we don't want to throw away, that, that we think is too valuable, but it's starting to accumulate.
Okay, so let me, let me do a scenario for you. One, if we open the sheds, we have to have somebody monitor the go, who's going, the going in, one person at a time. And even with that, people are putting things in there, okay? So now think about the fact that you have valuable things that you don't, certainly don't want to toss, you maybe don't want to keep around, and you are just one household in the town. So now we're talking about mega stuff. And I, I honestly think at the point in time where we go to open the sheds, that we actually have to have an event down there where things are laid out, what, bear with me, laid out because there's going to be so much stuff. And I don't, right now, definitely not right now, I don't think that we can open those sheds. Because I don't think we can manage people going in and out. And I, I believe that the, bear with me, the transfer station crew don't want to be working with that stuff. They don't want to be touching that stuff and trying to manage all of that. That's my thinking, okay? The volume alone is going to be something. I mean, I'd rather see something where we get to the point where we can do an open air thing and put out tables on the lower level and do something where it's spaced out, where people can work with it there and, and have it as, you know, something that goes over a two day event to at least get rid of a bunch of stuff for, for, let people get rid of a bunch of stuff. What do you think of that?
Well, I think it's something that we're going to have to address. I don't, I don't know if, if, if I agree that we're going to get bombarded with tons and tons of stuff down there. But I, I think it is something we have to keep in the back of our mind. And I'd like us to come to some agreement on it, I don't expect it tonight, but.
Understood, understood.
I mean, as far as the guys go down there, God bless them, they've never been crazy about those sheds.
Yeah, and bear, and bear with me, I think we were talking about, I think we were talking about the budget. So when you're talking about the sheds, where is that coming into play in what we've got here? Okay. And, and Chris, when it comes to people getting rid of stuff, we've seen quite, quite the influx of things that people are getting rid of that, in terms of they're dumping them at this point, a number of things. I know, we have a whole collection at home, too, that we would love to, you know, pass on to other people.
I mean, what I do notice is that there's a lot of people that are leaving stuff at the bins on this side of the railing.
One bin, yeah.
Alternative to that.
Yeah, there's a small, open area, and that's where some people have left some things. And, you know, is, I haven't seen that, that's been very many. I did see a lot of things there, but I think it was only at the one bin on the end.
I, I've seen things in front of the metal bin, I've seen some things in front of the wooden bin, just in general. And the guys usually just, I, I'm assuming, just toss it at the end of the day, but.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think they leave some for a day or two over the weekend. The, um, the other thing is, I think, Chris, in terms of the calls that we've gotten here, we've got, I know there's one family that has a young person, that, a young man, would love to have the sheds open, because that's where he would love, he loves to go. Have we gotten very many calls here?
I haven't gotten any about the sheds.
No, me either. I've had some casual conversations with people, and, you know, the understanding was is that they understand you can't, how you, how are we going to police it? I hate policing.
Well, there's, there's going to be a point where we're going to have to rely on, on, on people to start policing themselves.
They don't even, they won't even.
That wants to intentionally be exposed to COVID or any other things. You know, if we can give them direction and it could operate, I think it's something that we ought to take a look at, that's.
So here, yeah. So one of the things I know that we've experienced at the transfer station is that, okay, so when I wear my mask, wherever I am, I'm protecting you from me. If you're not wearing a mask, I'm not protected from you. That's how the masks are working. So we have people who go to the transfer station and will not wear a mask. They don't want to wear a mask anywhere. Maybe they are forced to do it when they go into a store, but they don't want to wear it anywhere, and they definitely don't wear, want to wear it when they're outside. So what happened before was that we actually had a complaint from one of our own transfer station guys who literally posted something online that said, people are coming down here and they're not wearing masks. That was a few months ago. And what they saw, and what I saw, I've observed down there is, yeah, sure, somebody comes in without a mask on, not a huge deal if they're not near anybody else. But they see somebody they know, or somebody pulls in next to them, or somebody walks up behind them, and I definitely saw that. And the person who walks up behind them has their mask on, but he doesn't. And so they're not policing themselves in a way that you would like. Plus, there's at least five percent of the population that won't wear a mask in there no matter what. I know, because they were nicely reminded that we have that policy. And could you bring one the next time you come? And I got, I got, literally, a couple of guys got super belligerent, like in my face belligerent. One of them was so belligerent that he, the bag of trash that he had, he was pulling bags of trash off the truck. He picked it up and he threw it into the general bin. And there was a woman coming up behind him, she had a mask on, he didn't. And he, she was about maybe three to four feet behind him, he missed her face by a foot with the bag. Okay, there, there was a comment about me taking pictures of people without masks down there. I never took a picture of a person without a mask. I took a picture of that guy's license plate and the other guy that looked like he was going to run me down. That was it, two pictures. And yet, people, you know, going to town on it. The reality is, people don't want to wear, some people don't want to wear a mask no matter what. And so those people are going to be going into the sheds as well. So, sorry, didn't mean to get on a soapbox, it's just that that's what we're experiencing. It's like people who want us to open up the town office building, some of those people don't want to wear masks either.
On, on the issue of the office building, I mean, are, is there any facility changes that we have to do to open it? I mean, plexiglass or?
No, that's another misunderstanding. First of all, we have, in the various departments, we have some plexiglass dividers.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we have those. The, the hallway going where the town clerk, town clerk and the taxpayer, it is thing, isn't, isn't wide enough to do social distancing. We would literally have to also hire somebody to monitor anybody coming in to maintain social distancing. We would probably, I don't know, maybe have to take their temperature, I'm not sure. But we have, you know, we know that they'd be going right by these offices. And anybody who thinks it's a straight shot to come in the front door, go by the tax collector's office, and then go right out, no, you're going down the stairs and you're going by Parks and Rec. And we also had a problem, even with the election, when we opened up the big conference room for same day registration, and you could cast your vote there. We did set it up so people could come in, we put X's on the floor, we had them go directly into the big conference room, we'd sealed off one side. We had it set up with the tables and whatever, and the people that had to help them. The people registered, they voted, they went right out the double doors. And we had to sanitize after all of them, each of them. So that's how we had to manage it at that time. Now what we have is, with COVID, we have even more transmittable strains are coming out. And also, we couldn't let them use the bathrooms. What did happen is we had people who were doing tallying down in that far conference room, the little one. And in there, one of the people, we have, you know, there are volunteers that are working with that. Person came up, was looking for the kitchen, came upstairs, went into the, went into the town clerk's office and had the mask down below the nose, went in there, asked where the kitchen was, got directed upstairs, because that person didn't know what was going on, and the person was wandering around upstairs. So trying to keep, and trying to keep people out of other areas and everything without putting up barricades is kind of a difficult thing as well. So certainly, you selectmen can come in and we can walk it and look at this. But, you know, again, we're supposed to be working on a reopening plan that's at the right point in time when the numbers start to go down, you have maybe some more people vaccinated, I would think. You know, we don't want to be foolish about it. We are not the only town hall that's not open, Wellington's not open. Not, their doors aren't open. And again, I ask, what services are we not providing through the alternate mechanisms that we have? What's disenfranchising anybody? We even put a drop box in. Okay, you can get, you can get your, they can get documents of, what's the word, notarized. They can pay their taxes through whatever vehicle they wanted, do it through. The tax collector will come to the window, they'll come outside. So what are they not getting for services that would require that we open up the building and let people start strolling through?
Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
As you say, I can answer that as a taxpayer. There was a lot of chatter this weekend about paying your taxes online because.
Yeah, I responded to it.
And I understand that, there's a fee charge because it costs a town a fee, but.
Which was there before.
Right, correct. But those people didn't pay their taxes online. The problem is, is that while you're right, the services can be had, it's the, I, I guess, speed bumps, roadblocks, or doors, however you want to look at it. It's a very, very, a lot of it is a perception, and quite frankly, I hate to say it, but it's not the employees' building, it's everybody in town's building, it's the taxpayers' building, and it's a perception, it's a problem.
That's a perception, you also have to consider that the employees need to be kept safe as well. We have a responsibility to them, we do.
I understand that, I, I, I'm in a, the same position, if not worse, so.
Yep.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so again, with what they can do and what they can't, if they were to come in and pay their taxes, let's just say people just were able to come in and pay their taxes, they have to stand in line. Okay, they'd have to stand in line outside, probably, most of them. And with the way they can do it now is they can come up, they can drop them in the drop box, they can pay online if they want to, they, the, the tax collector will come to the window. It's no different than coming to her window otherwise, you just, she'd just come to that window. So I understand the perception, I think that unfortunately, and I do feel it is the people's building, but there are people who work here who would be exposed to all of that all day long. The other thing is that people would come upstairs, they used to love to come up and visit Kibbutz, okay? And I understand that, too.
And, and I, I will say that that's the other thing that's missing. Is part of the reason you're not getting that information is because people don't feel like with that building being locked up the way it is, and I know other towns are locked up now, too. But they're all having the same problem, and I guarantee you that at some point in time, it is going to boil over. But that people don't feel like they can say anything to anybody, because unless we have contact information and play phone tag, and some people aren't comfortable doing that. I'm the only one at this meeting, I mean, that just goes to show you how uncomfortable 99.99% of the population is with what, with, with this kind of stuff.
All right, so what we have done is we have told them in the Ashford Citizen, we told them three months ago. We've told them online, we told them on Facebook, the regular town site, Facebook site. I've clarified for, for people on Ashford Community Connections, what we are doing as best I can. Didn't like having to do that, but I thought it was the best thing to do. I think that people got a little bit more information, I think you're always going to have people that are not going to be happy with it. Nobody here loves being sequestered in here. We miss the interactions as well, we try to be as pleasant as possible, we go out to people's cars. People, when they, if they were to just come here on a normal basis, they would still have to somehow get to the person that they needed to see. We have the phone numbers right there on the door. Call the department, the person will come down, and that's what we do. I'm hoping I'll lose weight running up and down the stairs, because God knows, Chris is, is thin, and I watched her go up and down the stairs, up 11 times and down 11 times, just for pistol permits, much less transfer station stickers. All right, so we, I use the elevator, sorry. So we're doing the best we can, and. So we're doing the best we can and, and people are being accommodating here. I, I could use the help of everybody in conveying to the public that. Hey, you know, we do have to watch, we don't, we don't have a second team here. And other towns have had to close their town clerk's offices, which means you can't get anything. You can't get any records. You can't get the things you need. So, um, for tonight, this is kind of off topic because it isn't on our agenda. That's, uh, certainly what's been going on here and I know that the public is, you know, they'll continue to press. Uh, we have, we are what, a hundred and ninety something people with COVID, who've had COVID now? In town. Then I expect the numbers are still going to keep, going to keep going up until we get more people vaccinated.
Catherine, if it is an issue that it's not on our agenda, I, I know this is one of the few agendas I've looked at. Where we haven't at least had that on the agenda, but why don't we just give you to make that an automatic part of our agenda?
Okay, can somebody make a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? I, okay. So I believe we've had most of our discussion about that. Is there anything else you'd like to say? Okay. Um, like I said, the. You know, I work here with these people every day and I know how focused they are on providing the services. And I know that they, you know, we meet every week. I know that they're being creative about how to do that. And, um, there's no way to truly convey it to the public. So that they understand what it's like to actually be in this building and be providing the services to everybody. And, um, no one's trying to make it difficult for anybody at all. But these people also have families. Uh, they have people in their families that are immunocompromised. And, uh, you know. To unduly, to have to expose them. When we can do things in another fashion. Is, um, really is very hard to take. So. Let's get on to much more exciting work. Let's, tax refunds, none. Okay, then the next item, B, act upon recommendation received from the Advisory School Building Committee. Regarding proposal to lease space on the Ashford school roof. Gentlemen, you received the letter. From Jim Rupert. Expressing the concerns about that. Uh, are you, uh, at a point where, uh, you would like to make a motion on this one?
I would make a, a motion that we defer to the recommendation of the. School Planning Committee and not take any action at this time. My rationale for that is. I, I think it's probably a poor time to be planning that when we're looking at several other projects at the school. That potentially could be affected by that. And I'm just not in a position right now to, to take a position one way or the other on it. My inclination is I don't necessarily think it's a good idea, but I'm not convinced one way or the other at this point. But I'm, I'm also not going to support taking any action on it.
Right, so your motion is to defer to the school building committee to assess this. While they're developing their plan?
Correct. I'd also like to see a legal opinion. On within whose responsibility that falls, although it's a school, it is a town building. So I don't know if that's something for our council to comment on or, or the school's council, but. I know I'd be more comfortable if we had some legal advice on that also.
Yeah, and I, if I understand correctly, on your motion, you're, you're saying that, um. That they would assess this, not necessarily make a decision. Because they're, everything they're doing is recommendations, correct? Do we have a second?
I'm not an IT guy, but you know, it just seems to me that if you're going to, I mean. How many, how many seasonal units do they have up at Briarly now? How much bandwidth are they going to take? Is it going to affect the bandwidth of the school? I'm not a, I'm not an IT guy. I don't know.
Actually, let's do this right. Let's do this right. Um, normally what we do is we make a motion and then we have a second. And then we have a discussion.
Okay.
Tonight's been a looser meeting, so.
All right, can I, can I bill, you're moving to accept the recommendation of the building committee? Pending a legal opinion? Is that what you want?
I move to defer any action by our board. Asking for further assessment from the building committee and either the town's legal counsel. Or the Board of Ed's legal counsel.
So this, you do know the school building committee already gave us their answer.
I, I, I read Jim's recommendation.
Okay, so that was the school building committee.
But as Roger said, I, I. Have no idea of what the technical implications of installing that unit on the roof are. Nor the legal implications. And I'd like to, before, if we were to consider it. And I'm far from that right now. I'd want to have more background and, and a better understanding of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that he also said, while the contin, committee continues to gather information. One of the things that's being recommended to us is an application for solar. Okay, so, um, I think. All right, so do we have a second?
I'll second on Bill. That, that's, I think, probably the.
All right, and now let's have the discussion. Okay, full discussion here. So. Uh, before we vote. Okay, so with this, uh, if I understand correctly. The, uh, there are things that could be influenced, could, could be. We don't, you know what, we don't even know what's going to be involved with the school roof. Therefore, why would we be making a commitment like this at this point in time? And certainly the current roof, if I understand correctly, cannot support. What they asked for. Is that right?
Well, I mean, yeah, Jim in his letter, you know, referenced the present leaking of it and. I know nine square feet is not a lot of square footage.
Yeah.
I'm just. I'm talked out on this, Catherine. I'm, I'm just not ready to take any affirmative action on it.
All right, all right, uh, shall we vote? All in favor of the motion and, uh, Chris, could you read that motion back?
Maybe.
Okay, give it a shot.
Bill moved defer action by the Board of Selectmen on the school's request. Pending further assessment by the building committee.
School building committee.
Yeah, school building committee. And requesting a legal opinion. On, I'm not sure what.
The implications of leasing that space.
Okay.
We do this with state buildings with most of your major towers and everything.
Yep.
We have to go through five different authorities before we can approve anything like that.
Love the state.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, okay, so, uh, vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Substained, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, remarks for the good of the board.
Um, there was just one thing I got to note here. It was a, a loose piece of material, but. About adding to the agenda, I believe, on enact authorizing changes from. Money purchase pension plan.
Yes, and what, um, I talked with Cheryl tonight. Okay, because we've had some meetings, um, with the people that we would be working.
For technical purposes, I will move to add that to our agenda.
Okay, but it'll end up as old business the next time, uh, because I don't think we're ready to have that. Conveyed to you in the way that you need to, to do, to take action on it. We can add it to the agenda if you wish.
Hi, Catherine, I just brought it up because I got a sheet of paper in my package that gave me the impression you wanted that added. I. Not in a hurry to discuss this. We can, we'll put it off till the next.
Okay, what I'd like to do is I would like to actually discuss this in our working meeting on, on Saturday. Because I think we'll be in a better position to lay that out clearly for you.
You want to call a special meeting that's coming Saturday for this?
Uh, actually, we have, we have, are going to have our working meeting on the budget.
On Thursday, right? Oh, on week, so we have. What's our meeting Thursday?
The meeting Thursday is the Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Very good. Um, and the other thing too is I'm not sure, yeah. So, yeah, I just think we'll be better prepared to lay it out in clear and simple terms. Because I don't think you've received any of the material about this, correct?
I got just what I told you I got.
We did, we didn't have material when we sent out the agenda.
Yes, that's right. So, um, I would like to make sure you have the opportunity to see that. And also it can get a little complicated, so make sure that we can make sure it's clear for everybody. Okay, so, yeah, for the next meeting, for our, uh, Saturday meeting, we'll put that on.
What time is our meeting on Saturday, please?
Do we set a time yet? I don't think we did. Typically, when we've done these working meetings, it's been like nine o'clock. What, uh, what are your schedules like?
I'm afraid, just want to.
I'm. I believe I'm good at that, with that time.
All right, so we'll go for that time.
As long as we don't have another blizzard come in.
Yeah, I know. And actually, to tell you the truth, I would have loved to have had this one be a face-to-face meeting with distancing somehow. With the three of us. Um. Because it's a working meeting and we're all going to be flipping papers. So. Um, I think we're setting it up with Zoom though. Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much. Most of them passes.
Good night, folks. Stay safe.